Okay, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I work in the Eagles Environmental Support Division and I welcome you to our public hearing tonight for the Boulder revetment applications on Sun's End and Chickamaug Township, Marion County. I need to share my screen, so oops, bear it with me. Not sure why I did that, okay. So, welcome. All right, so listed on the screen right now, you should see the four applications that we're talking about today at this meeting and hearing. I'll come back to this in just a moment. In terms of how our meeting is going to run tonight, many of you may have never been on a virtual public meeting and hearing, so just run through this. Basically, we're going to go through some introductions. I'm going to talk about some, well, then we're going to host always called an information session, which is will allow the applicant to present, the representative for the applicant to present a short presentation on what's, what they're planning to do. Five to 10 minutes, we'll unmute that person when the time comes, so they can present. We're going to spend a few minutes for a question and answer session. So we'll take questions and answers up till about 6:30 or so. So that's a time, it's kind of informal where if you have questions about the project, you could ask them and we got our Eagle staff here that can help answer as well as the representative from the, if the applicants that can help answer those questions. After the question and answer period, we have the official public comment part. That's where you actually make your comments for the record. So in terms of the way the evening works is you got really two parts. The first part being the informal informational session Q and A type part. And then about 6:30 or so, we're going to switch it to the official public hearing part, which is much more formal in which we're just here really to listen. We're going to read off a hearing statement and then we'll open up the mics and explain how we're going to do that for you to make your official comments. And if there's a few of you, looks like that are on the phone, I'll explain how we do that as well if you're on the phone. So that's how tonight's basically going to run. If you probably already noticed this, all your lines are muted right now, means you can hear us, but we can't hear you. When the time comes, I'll explain how to unmute your mics and how that'll work when we go to the public comment and the Q and A. Now, when we go to the question answer part, you can submit your questions. You probably want to wait to do that until we do the presentation and do that. But once we get to Q and A, you can, you can type your question and submitting us, submit it to us using the Q and A button on your toolbar. Also, if you want, you can raise your hand and it'll be available there too. We are recording this public meeting and it will be posted on our YouTube channel in the next couple of days. So if you miss it or need to watch it again or forward it on to somebody that couldn't view it tonight, we'll let you all know as soon as that's available using the emails that you probably provided to log in tonight. All right, so with me today, we've got some staff from Eagles Water Resources Division. I'm going to have them pop on and introduce themselves. So Ben and Kyle.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ben Zimmatt and still working from home, but the Kalamazoo District Office, been there going on 25 years. Glad to be here with you tonight.
Kyle Alexander, I'm the district supervisor in the Water Resources Division out of Kalamazoo. Work closely with Ben.
All right, thank you, Ben and Kyle. So they're going to be listening in tonight with, with, with me, listening to your comments and helping answer questions. Ben, I'm going to take a minute and let you quickly explain kind of the unique nature of today's hearing because you got four different applications.
Good to keep it there. Sorry that the slide was maybe a little bit hard to decipher there, but the intent was to have one on each line here. Normally, when we have a public hearing, it's just for one application. But in this case, these four applications you see here with the submission number and kind of dropped down adjacent to that is the applicant name and then the address of the site at the far right. Because these, all four of these were submitted pretty much concurrently and because the the nature of what they're doing is so similar and, and at least three of them are to be a one contiguous kind of project, it did not make sense for us to, four different public hearings, so we're having this one. And when it comes time to making the comments, I'll have a little more instruction on that. But one public hearing to save everybody's time on four separate applications.
All right, thanks, Ben. Okay, my slide's down here. Get us back to where we're supposed to be. All right, so at this point, we're going to take a few minutes to let the applicant present what's going on. Mr. Eric Nelson from Prison Science Technology is going to talk and will unmute his line. Right now, I'm looking at my board and I got three people here logged in as Eric Nelson. So if the one that wants to talk can please raise your hand, I'll unmute your line, so. All right, there we go. So Mr. Nelson, you should be able to unmute your line now. Looks like you got it, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Jim.
Okay.
And good evening, everyone. As Jim mentioned, my name is Eric Nelson with Prism Science and Technology in St. Joseph, Michigan. I'm the permitting agent of record for the four applicants seeking approval to construct stone revetments on their properties located along Sun's End Road in Chickamaug Township, Michigan. Taken together, these four permit applications are the subject of today's hearing. As agent, I've been involved with each applicant for many months in their painstaking planning and permit application efforts. Given the considerable amount and rate of erosion experienced at these properties and the resulting instability of their bluffs, the applicants are seeking to save their homes and properties from being further threatened by the high water levels and severe storm events of Lake Michigan. Severe shoreline and bluff destruction extends a significant distance to the north and to the south of the proposed project area. This damage has been repeatedly observed at both Harbert Beach to the immediate north of the proposed project and at Cherry Beach located immediately to the south. At both public beach locations, the destruction of public access and beaches caused by the forces of Lake Michigan had been a recurring problem for the township and the general public. Although the Cherry Beach access stairway has been recently rebuilt, to this day, the Harbert Beach bluff remains in dangerous condition and still has no direct and safe public access. All throughout the planning and design phases leading up to and through submission of permit applications to Eagle and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the applicants have given considerable thought and recognition of their neighbors and communities concerned regarding placement of stone revetments along this particular stretch of shoreline. As such, alternatives were evaluated for each applicant to provide effective, effective protective, protection of the toe of their eroding bluffs while still offering some degree of increased bluff stabilization. I should pause here to mention, for those in attendance not familiar with bluff terminology, that when I refer to quote unquote, the toe of the bluff, I'm referring to the lower region of the bluff where it meets the beach. So just so we're clear there. So continuing with the discussion on alternatives, sandbags were also considered in the evaluation process, as was the do nothing alternative. While moving homes and septic systems landward might appear to some to be the simple solution, various site-specific property constraints such as local and county zoning ordinances, isolation distances for septic systems, and physical property constraints result in either insufficient or insignificant areas to accommodate that option. So while analyzing the best long-term approach to provide both protection and stability of the toe of the bluff, it was concluded that the use of sandbag would not achieve the level of protection needed in the long term. And the do nothing alternative was really not an alternative at all. In fact, doing nothing could very well cause far greater destruction to the natural dune environment ecology. However, given the length of time needed for proper permitting and construction, sandbags have been temporarily placed at the toe along various segments of the applicant's bluff line. This was done as a precaution against the typically damaging storm events we almost come to expect during the destructive fall season each year. Although the placement of sandbags as interim measures are not the subject of tonight's hearing, the applicants do not in any way consider these sandbags a substitute for permitting and construction of permanent revetments for which they have applied. As a matter of fact, and even though the lake level has receded slightly in recent months, given the current poor condition of the toe of the bluff and the bluff face, the properties will remain vulnerable to continually degradation despite the limited reprieve they hope to achieve through the placement of temporary sandbags.
Excuse me, Mr. Nelson? I just wanted to break in and let you know that I do have the diagrams or the exhibits you submitted, so let me know when you want to go to those.
I will, yes, thank you.
Yep.
While we recognize that the general public opinion of the proposed project has been quite vocal, we also recognize the apparent misunderstanding of our project as it relates to the public's ability to walk freely on the beach if the stone revetments were to be built. This misunderstanding is likely the result of misinformation circulated about the project in which it attempts to compare our proposed project incorrectly, we believe, to other shoreline protection projects in Marion County and beyond. We've also seen information circulating that attempts to suggest the proposed project will be similar in nature and design to that of the web project located northerly of Harbert Beach and that the cause of the shoreline destruction in the area is a direct result of the web project. It should be noted, however, that this entire stretch of shoreline was in a state of destructive crisis long before the web project, even though newly formed beach has been created downdrift of the Harvard Beach, downdrift at Harvard Beach since the completion of the web project. But we're not here to debate the features of the web project by any means. So in order to better understand the post-construction configuration of our proposed project, we prepared two sets of figures which provide good examples of the profile of the post-construction beach areas in the vicinity of the applicant's properties. These figures are representative of what the general public could expect to see if they were actually walking the beach. Jim, could we have exhibit A, please? Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to let everybody know that if you have trouble seeing these exhibits, I, in a chat, I put a link to where you can actually download or view them in our My Waters database. If you click on the link in the chat, you can go, it'll bring it up and it's, it's the exhibits for today's date. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jim.
Document, the document that's there should be the, the one at the top of the column and it says something to the effect of public hearing exhibits. So look for public hearing exhibits.
Thanks, Ben. Exhibit A has been provided to show the beach profile near the northerly end of the project at the Leonard property. Exhibit A indicates two depictions based on actual lake water elevations of Lake Michigan. In the top figure, in the top of the figure, the lake elevation is shown to be 582.84, if you can see that. And that was on May 20th of 2020, shortly before the permit applications were submitted to Eagle and the Corps of Engineers. The profile on the bottom of the figure is lake water elevation and beach profile on October 15th of 2020. On that day, the water elevation coincided exactly with the federal ordinary high watermark elevation of 581.5. And hopefully you can see that as well. On the figure, the location of the ordinary high watermark is shown with a vertical line with a notation OHWM, if you can see that. The lower profile shows what the proposed revetment would look like after construction. A particular note is the location of the ordinary high watermark relative to the exposed portion of the revetment at the surface of the beach, which clearly shows a significant width of remaining undisturbed beach. Contrary to much of the circulating information, the proposed revetments are not designed to mimic a groin-like structure, a structure that protrudes into the lake or extends lakeward of the ordinary high watermark and therefore does not encumber or obstruct the public's ability to traverse the beach. What we're proposing is in full compliance with recently passed Chickamaug Township resolution pertaining to obstructions placed on any beach which prevents the public from freely traversing the beach below the ordinary high watermark. We note that nearly all of the opposing circulating photographs and images of other es-built stone revetments show just the opposite in an attempt, we believe anyway, to present post-construction beach conditions contrary to what we're actually proposing. In addition, the shoreline protection measures proposed by each applicant are to be constructed entirely upon their respective properties and will not encroach upon any adjacent public or association product, properties in the vicinity. Again, significant effort was undertaken in the planning phases of the project to locate and design the revetments as far landward as possible while still providing the necessary protection to the toe of the bluff of each property. That's all I have on exhibit A. Maybe we have exhibit B, Jim. Thank you. Exhibit B shows the post-constructed revetment at the Hamm property located immediately north of Cherry Beach with the same lake water elevations as was presented in exhibit A. In this case, the figure shows an even greater distance from the lakeward edge of the exposed revetment to the water's edge and the location to the ordinary high watermark. So again, there would be no obstruction or inability for the public to traverse, traverse the beach. Now, we're fully aware that, you know, some have stated that the placement of stone revetments such as those being proposed will cause damage or destruction to adjacent and nearby properties or beaches. But such conclusions appear to be based on a misrepresentation, or rather, the inaccurate comparison to other revetments along Lake Michigan shoreline. That's why we find this public hearing to be a good opportunity to provide more detail and accurate information to the project that's actually being proposed. We would hope that in simplifying the representation and description of the project as shown in exhibits A and B, that it will relieve some of the fears of many who might not have been fully aware of exactly what's being proposed relative to other revetment projects. In this case, or in each case, rather, the proposed westward protrusion of the revetments has been minimized by placing the structures as far landward as possible to maximize the distance from the water's edge and the ordinary high watermark. This also helps to ensure to the greatest extent practical that the proposed structures avoid interfering with both the littoral drift and the natural downwind movement of sand across the beach. Potential scouring has even been addressed by designing the base of the lakewardmost edge of the toe stone at or below the low water elevation of Lake Michigan. Given the manner of design and lake and beach conditions, we do not believe that the proposed revetments in and by themselves would be the cause of damage to adjacent unprotected properties and beaches. Such damage would be caused by Lake Michigan itself, as it's already been repeatedly observed in the project vicinity. That's all I have on exhibit B unless anyone needs any clarification on something they can't read or see.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Nelson. I'll leave that up there for a little bit. And just to remind people that in the chat, I did put a link up there. So if you want to take a closer look at these exhibits, you can go there and like Ben said, if you go to that link, it's the first link on that page. So right now, what we're going to do is open it up for some questions.
Wait, I wasn't quite finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. But as I mentioned earlier, as required in the permitting process as it pertains to structures lakeward of the crest of the dune, an evaluation of potential alternatives to the proposed revetments was undertaken for each of the four applicants. Alternatives that were considered included the relocation of homes and septic systems, as was the use of sandbags as a potential long-term solution. Given the undesirable and unstable condition of the toe and the face of the bluff, the do nothing alternative was quickly ruled out. Typical of any feasibility analysis, cost benefit and practicality were also considered. With respect to house and septic system relocation, none of the affected applicants have sufficient space on a landward side of their respective properties to satisfy the cost benefit portion of the analysis. In fact, given the high rate of bluff erosion and existing poor condition along this stretch of shoreline and bluff, moving a house and septic system only slightly landward really does nothing to address the underlying threat to the house in the first place. The summary of the evaluation concluded that for each applicant, a practical difficulty exists, that the circumstances involve human health and safety, and that there are no reasonable or feasible long-term alternatives to that which is being proposed. Regarding revetment design, position, and construction, in each case, the proposed revetments have been designed in accordance with best engineering practices and current industry standards, including the terminal ends often referred to as returns or endcaps to provide a transition to adjacent unprotected properties. In addition, each proposed revetment will be entirely constructed on private property in a manner which does not infringe upon the public trust and which does not impede the public from traversing the beast, beach, as was shown on exhibits A and B presented earlier. Site-specific access to each project work site for construction purposes will be entirely on authorized private properties and their beaches. In regard to material conveyance and heavy equipment routing on Cherry Beach Road and over short distance through Sun's End Road, these roads have experienced heavy vehicle traffic many times in the past, such as cement trucks, dump trucks, large material delivery trucks, you know, all for new homes constructed in the general area. For this project, however, the applicants are prepared to ensure that the proper surety bond is in place to eliminate any uncertainty regarding the question of damage and repair of the roadways leading to the access point at the Hamm property. In addition, and as a requirement of the critical dune permanent, all areas of ingress and egress for the proposed project, at the end in this case, the Hamm property, will be restored to original condition and planted with native vegetation immediately upon project completion. Any excess excavated material temporarily removed for the placement of toe stone will be placed on top of the completed revetments to be made available to the littoral system and to fording recreation. This ensures that the net balance of existing soil volume remains the same. Although what's being proposed isn't some new concept, it's important to note that the site-specific conditions of this stretch of shoreline have been duly incorporated into the overall design. The proposed revetment consists of the same permit parameters as numerous other revetments already permitted and constructed in Marion County and other locations and will not deplete or degrade the diversity, quality, or function of the dunes located on public or private properties in the project area, including Cherry and Harbert Beaches. Further, when placed as far landward from the ordinary high watermark as is proposed, it's not uncommon for revetments to become completely or partially covered by accreting wind-blown sand and foredune over time. Many examples of this have been seen from northwest Indiana all the way through Van Buren County and beyond. I personally have been involved with many projects where previously installed stone revetments have become completely buried, unnoticed, and forgotten for years until recently exposed by shoreline erosion. And I'm not mistaken, this is exactly the case on like two properties south of Cherry Beach. So again, having worked very closely with each of the applicants, I just want to say that they are not undertaking this effort without having given extensive thought and research to other potential alternatives to enable them to effectively protect their properties, given the site conditions they currently face. Nor are they undertaking this effort frivolously and without careful thought and respect for their neighbors, the environment, and surrounding community. Unfortunately, they've been left with no other meaningful alternatives, but this project has been professionally planned and designed and would be professionally constructed. In closing, we believe that the revetments as proposed need all public, local, county, state, and federal parameters for a permissible project. On behalf of the applicants in this matter, I thank you for the time for us to better explain this project and I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Nelson. So what we're going to do now is take a few minutes for questions and answers from Eagle staff and if necessary, from Mr. Nelson. So I'm going to have Ben come back up again here. And basically, if you have a question, you can type it in the question box. Looks like we got a couple in there already. If you want to voice your question, you can click on the raise hand icon and it'll tell me you want to ask a question and I'll mute your line when the time comes and you can ask your question. If you're on the phone, looks like you got a couple people are just calling in. If you hit star nine, that will raise your hand for me here to see and I will let you know and call on you, so you can unmute your phone that way. So that's star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, so way it's going to work, I'm going to ask the question, I'll read them off. Ben, they will field them, so if Ben can answer, he will. If not, he'll direct it to the right person. So the first question we had that came in today was about the, the revetment, the, the stone. It said, "That was noted that stone revetment is a permanent solution. My understanding is that at some point, stone revetment will at some time fail. Is this a correct understanding?" So Ben.
The way I read that question, they're asking Mr. Nelson on that. So I'm going to ask Eric to try to answer that.
Well, typically, I wouldn't say that the revetment would fail, but that's not to say that any stone revetment doesn't require maintenance over time, you know, over the course of many years. But I wouldn't characterize that as, as failure.
Okay. Another question about the boulders or the revetment. How do you know that these will not be relocated by the lake?
Well, if that question's for me, I can take that.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Well, that's what I was hoping to depict on exhibits A and B to show the relative distance between the lakeward extent, thanks, Jim, of the revetment at the toe compared to the water's edge and to the ordinary high watermark.
Okay, so you're saying this, this person's asking, how do you know they won't be relocated by the lake? So is that because of the distance or?
How the revetment won't become relocated?
Well, how, how do you know that the, they're just saying, how do you know that these will not be relocated by the lake? Assuming they're talking about?
Well, it's not proposed to be constructed anywhere near the lake. It's proposed to be constructed as far landward and adjacent and up against the actual toe and lower face of the bluff. And that's where they should remain.
Okay. Going to exhibit B, someone's got a question about that. They're saying, and I think this for you as well, Eric, exhibit B, top panel, high watermark at 30 feet, and in lower panel, the revetment reaches 29 feet only, reached 29 feet, only one to two feet left of, of the beach. Did, did you get that?
I think so. And, and Ben, you've probably explained this a thousand times regarding how the location of the ordinary high watermark is kind of a moving target in terms of elevation and change of shoreline. So maybe Ben, you might want to.
Yeah, okay. I'm not, not entirely sure I understand the question, but what I'm seeing in the chat and Jim, can, can everybody see these questions or, or just us?
No, they're just coming in here to me.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So again, their question says in exhibit B, top panel, high watermark is at 30 feet and in the lower panel, the revetment reaches 29 feet. And then says one to two feet left of the beach. Yeah, so it's not, it's still not real clear to me, but I think maybe this will answer it is that, so what, what this triple D and prism, these plans show mainly is two things, that the top panel was May of 2020, when the water was at 582.48. And it's showing that if the, if the beach and the, and the land has not changed and so, you know, and it does, but if that dotted line of the ground contours has not changed, then what it's showing is how much then, you know, five months later, the water has essentially receded or allowed more land to be exposed. So I think what, the two things that this plan, I think it's trying to show, maybe it answers the person's question, the top panel, they're showing 19 feet at a higher water level from the toe of the bluff, thanks, Jim, from the toe of the bluff to the water's edge. And in the bottom panel, they're showing 26 feet from the exposed portion of the revetment to the water's edge. So yeah, without being able to have a dialogue, I'm not sure if, if we should spend too much more time trying to answer that question.
Yeah, so it's more than two feet, one to two feet of beach.
Yes.
Yes, okay. What can we expect if there's destruction of Cherry Beach from the stone revetments? So if there is destruction, what can, and Ben, do you want to take that?
What I'm seeing here is, what can we expect if there is destruction of Cherry Beach from the stone revetment?
So what would happen if there was some sort of destruction?
That's a, I don't know. I don't know if that's a question for the applicants or me, and I guess I'll say it's, I know what they're asking, I guess, but it's, I don't know how, that we can answer that. I'm sorry, I think we're going to have to.
I, I think you're right. I think it's really hard for us to answer hypothetical questions such as that. I think we'll have to leave it at that.
Okay. Where is the property line on the beach? Is it related to the water level or the owners have claimed to Lake Michigan?
For each of the four applicants, their westward. For each of the four applicants, their westward property line extends to the water's edge of Lake Michigan, wherever that may be, under repairing law.
Okay. This person's asking, Mr. Nelson, do you have a diagram of what the beach will look like with the revetment and the water at high water in May? The diagram shows your revetment with low water.
I'm not clear on the question. Top of the figure shows the water elevation and location of the water's edge in May of last year.
Which would be a higher water level, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, when it was at the highest, is that?
Right.
Can we say that? And then the A is when it was lower?
Correct.
Or down here in October, okay.
So if I was going to help to answer that, I'd say what's nice about this kind of diagram is you kind of stack on each other. So if you almost combined what you see as the boulder in the bottom and the high water, the the May water level, then that's that's how to envision what this question, what this person is asking.
Right. And Ben, here's a question about the ordinary high water mark. So how is the ordinary high water mark determined? What years or how many years? We know this is a thirty-year event. So do you have a quick way to explain that or?
I'll I'll go ahead and say that for the purposes of the Part 325, and I'll explain more about that. Part 325 with a capital P is thus is the portion of the overall Natural Resources Statute for the State of Michigan. That law, in in the law itself, it established for the State of Michigan what the elevation is for our regulatory purposes of the ordinary high water mark. And in that law, if you convert the elevation to what we call IGLD eighty-five, which is International Great Lakes Datum of nineteen eighty-five, then under that law, Part 325, the Great Lakes Statute, the ordinary high water mark is five eighty, five eight zero point five. And so that's the, that's what we are held to when we're after actually having to apply the criteria or whether or not we even have authority under the Great Lakes Statute. So there's been a lot of, sorry to get too much into the weeds here, but there's been a lot of discussion over the last six months about then whether or not people need permits if they're going to do work, say, on the exposed beach, if it's above the ordinary high water mark. And and I don't think we should get too much into that now, but possibly at the end of the hearing, if there's enough of these questions, I can readdress it when the formal hearing is done.
Yeah, if I might add to your comments there, yes, the for the State of Michigan purposes under 325, that IGLD elevation is five eighty point five, five eight zero point five. For federal purposes and permitting through the Corps of Engineers, it's five eighty-one point, five eighty-one point five, which is what we depict here as a worst case. Five eighty-one point five being a worst-case scenario as compared to five eighty point five.
And Ben, here we got a question about difference between the ordinary high water mark and the judicial, the the regulatory high water mark and one that's judicial high water mark. You say the revetment is above the ordinary high water mark, are we certifying that these revetments did not violate the judicial ordinary high water mark and thus violate public trust? Do you know what that's referring to?
So so I believe what they're referring to there, what I just kind of went on about a minute ago was the ordinary high water mark as defined by that Part 325, the Great Lakes Submerged Lands Statute. But you know, people, if I throw out the term glass versus geckle, that's a a Supreme Court decision from years ago, not that long ago, that was essentially, the decision was whether or not people had the the right to be walking on the beach above or below the ordinary high water mark. And and that court case, so when they're saying judicial, then my understanding is they're talking about that court case. And that court, the ordinary high water mark, it directly connected elevation of five eighty point five that Part 325 statute is. So again, we could spend a two-hour seminar on just that issue, and it would still be really tough. So again, I hope that that at least explains what it is, but I can't give an answer that's going to be a final one on that.
Yeah, we actually have a whole video series on determining high water markets. Yeah, there's a lot of information out there. I'm just going to take a couple more questions before I move on to the actual hearing. This person's asking about did Prism approve this and support the stone revetment that has been installed south of Cherry Beach at Swift Lane? From what I understand, from people who walk that beach, from Cherry Beach, say that the boulders are blocking the ability to walk the beach. So I don't know, Ben, if you want to take that first, or what's your knowledge of that is, or do you want Eric, Mr. Nelson to address it?
Yeah, I didn't see that one. What I heard, what if if what I heard was a boulder revetment at Swift Lane, I was at the end of that a couple of weeks ago, and I don't, I don't remember seeing, Zach Chamberlain is here with us, and he was with me that day. Zach, if you want to chime in.
I think what they're referring to is the revetment at Crackerjack Lane, immediately north of Swift Lane.
All right, okay. So Jim, I don't see that question on here.
Yeah, well, they're referring to, well, that there's a specifically this, did Prism approve and support the stone revetment that has been installed south of Cherry Beach at Swift Lane? From what I understand, for people who walk that beach, from Cherry Beach, say that the boulders are blocking the ability to walk the beach. So I guess is there an issue with boulders blocking the beach at that that point?
Okay, I'll answer that one. If if we are talking about the Crackerjack Lane, that was so those Prism was was not the agent there. The agent was the consultant Dean Ray, and the contractor was Ocelca Constructors, if that's what we're talking about. And when we were there two or three weeks ago, there still was a thin ribbon of sand to be able to walk. The the boulder revetment was nearly complete, but there still was a thin ribbon of sand to walk.
Yeah, she, the person did clarify there. We're talking about Crackerjack Lane, looks like. Take one more question here. Let's see here, here it is. If the water level rises and meets the base of the revetment, would the public then have no way to walk along the beach without crossing the rocks?
Well, it's a, you know, here's the thing is that there's, we, you don't know how much we painstakingly try to strike this balance between protecting the public trust, uses of beach passage, and then also property protection. And when we are at at or above or near record high water levels, you know, even where there's things that have been installed for fifty years that may have been permitted that long ago or some sort of other legacy project, though these types of high water levels, people have the have the right to be able to walk it, but sometimes the conditions, the conditions just don't allow it. Just like if you were at a public park along a river, where you normally would walk your dog right near the, on the path near the river, but if the river is flooding, then you're not, you're not going to be able to walk there while that water is at a, as a, at a high level. So I know that's only a partial answer, but that's the best I can do in this setting.
Okay. We got, I think it's one last question. I think I want to clarify some. This person's asking, why do these cross-sections that were presented tonight differ significantly from those submitted with the applications? Benny, are they different or are this, it should be the same ones, I'm assuming, or are they different?
I don't, I'm going to see if Eric can, Eric, were there significant changes to what was presented here?
Actually, the the cross-section shown on the top of each exhibit are what was provided in the original application. What was added to this was the lower portion of the cross-section kind of updating it to October fifteenth conditions.
Okay.
And I guess I'll chime in a little bit here. I'm looking at one of the cross-sections in which the the cross-section of the profile in the applications, at least I think the original one. If you're look, if you look at the bottom of the bottom panel of this Exhibit B, what we're not seeing on the ones that were submitted with the application is kind of the the port, two things. The portions of this boulder revetment that would be embedded or under that ground profile. So there would be some that, some boulders that are hidden or underneath that ground profile. And then also what doesn't show here that was in the original application profiles is that sand that may be excavated to to trench in that toe, then because we want that sand to still be part of the littoral that sand is shown on these original cross-sections as being placed back up on top of the boulder. Knowing that it will, waves or wind or whatever may may wash it into the lake, or that in low water levels, it'll just become, more sand will be added to that. But I think, I think that answers the person's question. And primarily about the portions that are embedded that don't show on these plans, the ones that we're looking at right now.
Right, right. So at this point, you know, we're running a little bit late on time. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is really the the actual hearing, so to get your official comments. And that's what we want to spend the majority of our time doing tonight. But we did want to have the short amount of time to just have a quick presentation and allow a little bit of Q and A. There are so a few questions that didn't get answered tonight that came in through my board here, which I am going to provide to Ben and Kyle for them to look through and address as necessary. And at the end of tonight, you'll see a slide that will have Ben's content information. So if you need to get a hold of him afterwards, you you can do that when you want to. But to respect everyone's time, I want to make sure we have plenty of time to go through and take everybody's comment, official comments. So we're going to move into that. I want to thank Mr. Nelson for the presentation and for answering the questions. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point, what I'm going to do is we're going to move into the official comment stage of the evening. And the official comment, there's very different ways you can make an official comment. If you want to, you can voice your comment tonight during this hearing. Also on your screen, you're going to say, see, there's a few other ways to submit comments. If you don't feel comfortable submitting your comment during tonight's hearing, you can access it via My Waters. You can type an email and send it to to Ben. You can also send it by mail to the address shown on your screen as well. And for a couple of you that are on the phone, I'm going to read off Ben's email really quick, so you can jot that down if you'd like. It's a Zimont, Z I M O N T B, as in Ben, at Michigan, M I C H I G A N dot G O V. And the mailing address, if you want to mail your comment, is at Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, seven nine five three, Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, four nine zero zero nine. If you don't catch this in the chat, there is, looks like we've entered in good all the different ways to submit comment as well. So then I'm going to turn it over to Ben, and Ben's going to read off our hearing statement for tonight, which is going to kick it off. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, thanks again. Jim, if any of you've experienced one of our hearings before, I always apologize for a fairly long formal statement that we read with with all of these hearings. Part of it is meant to give background, part of it is meant to give instruction. But bear with me. So again, my name is Ben Zimont, and I'm the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and I'm serving as the hearings officer for tonight's public hearing. There's other Eagle res F Water Resources Division staff that are present. You've already met Kyle Alexander. You you heard Zach Chamberlain and one of our Lansing staff, Kate Literally, is also present, but I don't think we're able to use, un- unmute her at least quickly. So she is here, though. So the agenda tonight, as far as the the rest of this, the formal part of the public hearing, I'll begin with this background information of why we're here, then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I'll outline the procedures under which we'll take your comments, and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. Then it will be time for you to provide your comments, and we'll spend the majority of the rest of the time listening to your comments. At the end of the hearing, there'll be a short summary. By way of background, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate activities such as dredging or filling in a stream or a wetland, constructing dams, culverts, constructing marinas, placing shore protection, constructing docks, building in designated critical sand dune areas, wetlands, or floodplains. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, which is nineteen ninety-four Public Act four fifty-one as amended. So sometimes we call it NARA. Sometimes we call it Act four fifty-one. All of the different natural resources statutes that existed prior to nineteen ninety-four were combined into one huge one called the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. And all those formerly individual statutes are now a capital P part. And tonight, we're talking about Part 325 and Part 353. More about that later. So we're here tonight because Eagle has received requests for a public hearing on a group of four applications for similar activities. Generally, they propose construction of boulder revetments along the shoreline of Lake Michigan within the critical dune area. Because of the similar conditions and proposed activities, rather than hold four separate hearings, Eagle is holding this one hearing. I know I already made reference to them before, but for the record, audio record especially, the four applicants and their locations, listing them from north to south, are the app, the applicant name and their address is Ted Hendrup, one three seven one six Sun's End Road, Harvard, or Sun's End, Harvard, Leonard Sun's End LLC at thirteen seven twenty-six Sun's End. Michael and Ellen, I think it's subject, one three seven four oh Sun's End, and Harvard Horizons LLC. I heard Eric refer to it as the ham site. So it's two last names, Ham and Stites here at one three seven eight four Suns End. So the purpose of the public hearing tonight, it is this, that in order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities meet certain criteria under two of those capital P parts of Act four fifty-one. The first one is Part three fifty-three, Sand Dunes Protection and Management. And the second one is Part three twenty-five, Great Lakes Submerged Lands. I'm going to quote some specific things from each of those statutes. Under Part three fifty-three, Sand Dunes Protection and Management, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations, and again, quoting a pertinent section here. Section three five three oh four one G says, subject to, sorry, three five three one six, a permit shall be approved unless the local unit of government or the department determines that the use will significantly damage the public interest on the privately owned land, or if the land is publicly owned, the public interest in the publicly owned land by a significant and unreasonable depletion or degradation of any of the following. One, the diversity of the diversity of the critical dune areas within the local unit of government. Two, the quality of the critical dune areas within the local unit of government. Or three, the functions of the critical dune areas within the local unit of government. However, when a special exception approved, when special exception approval is necessary, which is the case with these applications, then an additional section, Section seventeen of that statute also applies. That section reads similarly, does include additional language relative to the determination of practical difficulty and assuring human health and safety. That one is even longer to read, so I'm not going to do that today, but it's section three one seven of this, of the Sand Dune Statute. The other statute is part three twenty-five Great Lakes submerged lands. And in administrative rule fifteen, that says that approval shall not be granted unless the department and both of the following, A, that the adverse effects to the environment, public trust and riparian interests of adjacent owners are minimal and will be mitigated to the extent possible. And B, that there are no, that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the applicant's proposed active, proposed activity, which is consistent with the reasonable requirements of the public health, safety and welfare. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone who's interested, you all, uh, in these applications, an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision on whether or not to issue a permit. So please recognize that we can only use information that you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle uses in making a decision. An example of something that is not in the criteria for these decisions is, um, impact on the public or private road or dust associated with that. That's not something that we can consider under these two statutes. So some of you may want to simply, uh, express your support or opposition to the project and we'll be happy to make note of your position. But please understand that Eagle can't by law base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. The procedures tonight, uh, I need to mention first, for the record, that notice of this hearing was published in the Herald Palladium on December seventh, twenty twenty. So to ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we'll follow these steps. I think Jim is the one I, uh, say we will call the names of those who've indicated that they'd like to make a statement. And I believe we'll be calling you in the order that you registered for the hearing. Please remember Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that we use it, that we must use in making our decision. If you have questions and there is time at the end, depending on which is more appropriate, we'll either allow the applicant to respond or we, uh, Eagle staff may respond. Depends on how the timing goes here. And again, also because there's technically, there's four different applications being considered here. Please, when you make your comment, if, if you have a comment about one in particular, one, one of these properties patients clarify to that one or generally all four of them. Secondly, we'll then call on those who've, uh, indicated during the session that they would like to speak, because I already said that. If you have written comments or materials that you'd like to submit, you can email them to me or upload them into My Waters or send them via the US mail and we'll be showing you that slide again at the end. When all the comments have been completed, we'll ask if anyone else, um, would like to make a statement. And when your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted and you begin your comment. Please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person, um, I think we're going to start with three minutes, but a little bit soft on that. Absolutely, uh, a hard cutoff at four, uh, four minutes. Try to limit it to three. Jim will be giving you a, a heads up when you've got one minute left. So please begin wrapping up your comments within that allotted time. I just ask that everybody be courteous and respectful tonight. Please recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed projects and to listen, and for us to listen to those comments. Jim already said the hearing is being recorded and your comments will, will be part of the information Eagle will make and it's the sh- decision on whether or not to issue the permit on the proposed project, projects. The public comment period for this hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, so ending on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Additional, uh, and additional information or comments submitted in writing during that ten day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, we'll continue to evaluate the applications in order to make a decision to either issue a permit for the projects as proposed or issue with modifications or to deny them. You may find out what the decisions are by checking Eagle's My Waters website for each of these applications. Thank you for your attention and we'll begin now calling the names of those who've indicated that they do want to make a statement.
All right. Thanks, Ben. So, um, just to remind everybody, I do have a list of people here that, you know, they registered ahead of time and they checked that they wanted to make a comment. So I'll call them first. Um, and then after I get through that list of about like twelve to fourteen people, it looks like, um, I will ask if anybody else that's here with us tonight, if they'd like to make a comment. We do have about sixty-three people, um, tuned in tonight for this hearing. And just to remind you, when I call your name, uh, I will unmute your line. And depending on how you logged in, you'll either see something pop up that says you want to be, do you want to mute yourself? And you unmute yourself or I'll, you'll see a little microphone icon on your screen and you'll click that to unmute yourself. And then you can begin your comment. You have about three minutes. Like I said, I'll give you a warning about one minute. I'll either put my hand up and tell you one minute or I'll break in, um, I'll let you know just to keep things moving ahead around smoothly. So, um, yeah, make sure when you come up to state your name and any association you might be with or any affiliation you might have. So we'll start out, um, with the first name that I have on my list here. And I'm going to make sure, see if there, and it can take me a little time to find your name on my list of people logged in. So it might be a little delay. Um, the first person is, uh, David Bunt or Bunty, Bunty. Um, I see you there and I'm going to unmute your line, sir. So you can go ahead and, uh, make your comment.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, yes, it's David Bunty and the supervisor, uh, Chickaming Township. And on behalf of the Chickaming Township Board of Trustees, I am affirming the content of a letter that we submitted on November the sixteenth of twenty twenty. The township continues to oppose the issuance of the revetment permits being sought pursuant to the referenced applications on Suns End in Harbor. The properties involved are immediately adjacent to and with a few hundred feet of the township's Cherry Beach Park, given to the township ninety-nine years ago by the Warren family and the jewel of Chickaming Township. Rejoining Cherry Beach is a three acre parcel which Chickaming has been in the process of purchasing. And the purchase is being made possible by a grant from Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund and by donations from over nine hundred individuals, businesses and foundations. The project has been in motion for the past two years, totals over four point one million dollars. The installation of the structures proposed nearly the length of a football field will have a detrimental effect on both Cherry Beach and the acquisition parcel. Additionally, the toe of the revetments that was not shown on the previous exhibits this evening is pictured though on the shoreline revetment plan submitted for the projects may prevent passage by foot along the shore of Lake Michigan below the ordinary high watermark, precluding the public's use as provided for under Michigan's public trust doctrine articulated in Glass versus Dekel. The structure would also prevent passage by foot between the only beaches owned by the township, Harvard Beach and Cherry Beach. Finally, per the township's environmental engineer's determination quoting, any shoreline erosion mitigation strategy will have an impact or an im, an effect, excuse me, on the neighboring properties. The proposed revetment project at Suns End represents an aggressive shoreline mitigation strategy, end quote. This proposed strategy will have a devastating environmental and economical effect on our coastline and beaches and a long-term irreparable impact on the township's property and the acquisition parcel adjacent to it. Chickaming Township firmly objects to these permit applications and requests they not be issued by Eagle. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. All right, going to my next name on my list here, uh, Julie Glavin. Julie, I'm finding your name here and I want to mute you. So stand by. Well, I had her earlier, so, uh, I saw her earlier, but it looks like, I don't know if she left or not. So Julie, if you're in attendance, if you would raise your hand, I cannot call, I can unmute you, but it looks like you were here, but maybe you had, uh, stepped out. I'll come back to you. All right. So, uh, next person is Arthur Anderson. Arthur Anderson, I got two people logged in as Arthur Anderson. So if the one that wanted to speak could raise your hand, please, and I'll unmute you. Okay, sir. Arthur Anderson, I have unmuted your line, so you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Very good. Yes, uh, I'm the, uh, chairperson of the Chickaming Township Park Board. And the park board manages Cherry Beach, which is owned by the Chickaming Township as, uh, Supervisor Bunty mentioned in the previous comment and is directly south of the proposed revetments. And it's the consensus of the park board and the former members that we oppose the, uh, proposed revetments. As, uh, Supervisor Bunty mentioned, you know, Cherry Beach was given to the, uh, township and the people of township, uh, ninety-nine years ago in nineteen twenty-one. And they've raised, the community has raised, uh, one point six five million dollars to add four hundred feet to the beach. And we have a concern that, uh, the revetments will, uh, negatively impacts the beach because all the reading that I've done and the advice that we have gotten is, is that all these revetments do impact the littoral drift of sand on the beaches and the loss of this littoral drift dur- especially during periods of high water, you know, will, uh, cause a loss of sand on the public beach. And for that reason, we oppose it. And there's no prediction of what the high, the water levels will look in the future. I had made a comment previously, a question really, you know, concerning the diagrams, which as I said, the rock revetment shows the revetment in place in a period of low water. But in fact, during, in the spring, uh, the water level is much higher. So it's unclear to see the impact of the revetment during a period of high water as was in the spring. But it's pretty clear that the, there will be a loss of beach because there is a stone revetment to the, uh, south of Cherry Beach, which is not transversible during periods of high water and the same impact, I think, would occur with the one to the north. Uh, so again, the prism, the owners, uh, and Mr. Nelson cannot, uh, guarantee that there's, uh, not going to be a loss of, of, uh, littoral drift and loss of sand because of the natural movements which are going to be impacted. Cause all of these revetments, all the groynes, no matter how well intentioned they are, they will have a negative impact on the natural movement and move of sand and the natural movement of the dunes. So for that reason, we oppose the, uh, the proposed revetments. And I think there are alternatives that need to be used, for example, possibly the tubes or other alternatives that are possible rather than these permanent, uh, features. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, sir. Okay, I'm going to look at my list here. Uh, next person I have up to speak is, uh, John and Susan McGrail. And I see your name there, so I'm going to unmute you. So you're unmuted? Go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and, uh, state your name and, and the association you might be with. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm Susan McGrail and my husband doesn't even realize I'm on the meeting and he's Dr. John McGrail. We have a place on Johnson Lane. And I submitted to you multiple articles, um, regarding, um, the types of barriers that have, you know, may be used or may be proposed. But our, our major concern is the rebar and rock that they're very dangerous. A kid could be impaled on those. The sand seems to be eroding behind them, around them. And it blocks the public's right to just access the water line, you know, to walk the beach. I, I think the, are they called Geo, G, I've written it out. I apologize. Caught me off guard here. The sandbags, but they're called, they start with a G.
The Geo Tube Sandbags?
That's it. Geo Tube Sandbags. Those seem to be, you can get over them, you can get around them. And I understand once things start to, uh, if sand comes back and you can replant and, and get something going where there's been erosion, that they can remain or you can actually splice them and they can kind of degrade. But our concern is, is that, you know, if, if you've bought a property or you own a property and it's been built and it's in an area where erosion is occurring, it, it's like any other property that you own, it's, um, doesn't entitle you to then take the public access away from people who want to walk the beach. Or use the cheap way and to throw rock and rebar. That rebar is really, um, I had a shoe and it cut the bottom of it really bad. One of those rubber shoes. It, it went pretty deep into it. My foot slipped. So with that, I have all those articles I submitted. And I, I just don't think it's an eminent domain thing. I think that we have to have a public access to the actual water line to walk it without being impeded by boulders and rebar. Maybe cement walls. Um, it's, it's going to cost, but going cheap isn't fair to the rest of us. And I cannot find my husband, so I have no idea what he has.
Okay. Well, I, I did receive your email with the, with the article, so, so thank you.
Yeah. And I appreciate you allowing us to speak. So you, you do have our email. Um, and I just came in on the meeting, so, um, I feel badly for those people that have properties where there is erosion. You know, I've been in a situation like that with property, but, um, it came back on me. I didn't make it come back on other people, you know, it's, it's, um, and some of these properties, I know they've torn down and rebuilt pretty much in the same position where they were when they should have really moved them back.
Okay. Time's up. Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, looking at my list, next person up is Douglas Graff or Grief. Um, I'm going to find you and unmute your line. So, sir, you can go ahead. You should be able to, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, I am Doug Graff and reside at one three seven six, uh, five Sun Ends Road in Harvard. I have crunched some numbers in order to get my mind around the scope of what the four proposed revetments in our street represent. I was shocked and I think you will be too. The numbers I'm about to talk to are about, are numbers in the original application, not the revisionist exhibits and discussion earlier today. The combined length of the rock revetments is four hundred and eleven feet, which covers forty-five percent of the beach area from Cherry Beach to Harbor Beach. The square footage of the rock revetments is approximately fourteen thousand square feet. Rocks will run, will run high into the critical dune and as much as fifteen feet into the ordinary high watermark. The weight of the imported rocks to be placed on the beaches is approximately seven and a half million pounds, which requires approximately two hundred and six truckloads of rocks coming down Cherry Beach Road and transported down the critical dune directly abutting Cherry Beach, which is absolutely mind boggling when barges could be used. The enormity of the undertaking cannot be underestimated, nor can the negative impact of the rock revetments that will be left on the beach once the work concludes. Many scientific studies, including those referenced in documents on Eagle's own website, show that these types of hardened structures eliminate the beach in front of them and also negatively impact the adjourning prop, properties. Consequently, no one should be surprised if Cherry Beach disappears in the near future if these permits are issued. Sadly, as been mentioned previously, this could occur after the people of the township have raised millions of dollars to exp- after the people of the township have raised millions of dollars to expand the public's access to Cherry Beach. The elimination of the beach in front of these rock revetments, as well as damage to neighboring beaches, means that the public will no longer be able to engage in the popular decades-long pastime of walking the Lake Michigan shore in this area. Not only is walking eliminated, but the ability of emergency vehicles to traverse the beach for rescues is eliminated as well. Just think, senior citizens and the, and the disabled will have trouble negotiating the large boulders and most likely will not be able to go on the beach.
Give one minute, sir.
In conclusion, I do not think the Chickaming Township and the impacted homeowners on Sun Ends should absorb the risks and the financial impact to our investments. Our tourist-rich community and our community enjoyment of the Lake Michigan shoreline that these few select property owners seek to impose on all of us. And I'd like to end by posing this question to Eagle, one that I hope it will answer tonight. How can Eagle grant any such proposed project anywhere on Lake Michigan shoreline when its own website materials establish that doing so eliminates the beach and therefore violates Michigan Supreme Court law and the public trust? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Going down to our next person that's requested a comment, Ian Ram. Ian Ram, I'm going to find your name here. Oh, there you go. I raised your hand. Okay, moved you. All right, I have unmuted your line, so you should be able to unmute yourself and talk. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jim, and thanks, Ben. I am a neighbor of these four applicants. I reside on Sun's End Road in Harbor. And I oppose these revetment applications. Our local unit of government, Chickaming Township, formally objected last fall, and again, just earlier in this meeting. And I believe their objections satisfy the reasons in part three five three and three two five of the statute for Eagle to reject these applications. I'd like to give you a few more reasons that may also qualify due to inconsistencies and inaccuracies. I personally sent an objection letter to Eagle on September twenty-fifth outlining a multitude of inconsistencies and inaccuracies in the applications. Eagle also made a correction request on October thirteenth for all four applicants. And despite four revisions to the applications made by Prism, these remain. In the joint permit application under project summary, it states that the revetments be installed for protection of human health and safety. Yet two of the applicants have their houses actively listed for vacation rental. And so there's no human health and safety reason if they're willing to allow people to stay in those homes in exchange for thousands of dollars in rental income. So these applications are misleading. The application also asked for all considered alternatives to the revetment plan, but none of those are listed. And so I'd say the application's incomplete. The application asked for other pertinent information, yet the applicants failed to disclose that their plan requires construction staging and activity on the private property of other neighbors and also along a limited common element governed by an association of which none of these applicants are members. These applicants have not presented required consent and permission from the impacted neighbors and association. And finally, the applications state that no portion of the revetments will extend below the federal or state ordinary high watermarks. But the accompanying drawings, not the ones that Prism tried to show today, but the drawings in the applications show that the revetments extend lakeward below those ordinary high watermarks. And so again, they're misleading. I'd also like to add that the applications show the entire beach area covered by boulder revetments, extending from the border of one public beach to another. It creates an immense public safety threat that should not be tolerated. The applicants seek approval to violate the public trust doctrine, and I understand this is a tricky issue for Eagle. But from the public's point of view, Eagle is now on notice to protect the public trust as directed by the Michigan Supreme Court. The application for the Hamstites property fails to identify two adjacent property owners on the non-lakefront side of the property. It also misidentifies itself as Unit Three of the Condominium Association that it's adjacent to, even though it's not a member of that association.
Give one minute, sir.
And the applications for a special exception in a critical dune area for each of the four applicants all fail to answer the first question, which specifically asks that the sections of the model zoning plan, which the applicants are requesting relief from, are cited. So I'd say that these applications all lack the requested disclosures demanded by the public under regulation and law. So finally, let me just say that these applications are incomplete and misleading. They're asking Eagle to approve a plan involving trespassing on neighbors' private property, trespassing on a Michigan condo association's land and creating a massive public safety hazard and violating the public trust, which the state has been directed to defend by the Michigan Supreme Court. And so they must be rejected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next person for comment, Brian Kern. Brian Kern, I've muted your mic, so you can go ahead and make your comment.
Yes, I'm Brian Kern. We own the property just south of Cherry Beach. It has had revetment for many years, prior part of us even owning the property. We have a seawall that was installed in nineteen seventy-three by the previous owners and replaced, many of you know, the poles and the tires on our property with rock in two thousand and four. All work was above the ordinary high watermark. For most of the twenty years, the rock's been covered with sand till approximately late two thousand and nineteen, where the high water and storms uncovered them. Yes, occasionally lately, we've had no beach to walk in front of ours, but that's when the waves are high. The last two days, there was four to six feet at least of open sand in front of our rocks to walk on. There has been real no effect since I've been here on either property, north or south of us, due to our seawall or our revetment work. So I don't understand the real issue. Yes, like, like Ben said, if the river's high, you can't walk on the shore, and that's going to be normal everywhere, no matter what you do. I am for proper revetment, and from what I know of the work that Prism is suggesting be done, it sounds like all these requirements are met and that with all the government's regulations being done, where they've expedited revetment permits, the US Senate passed a bipartisan bill to make money available to government entities for permanent revetment. So the US government's been okaying this also. And many of the properties, you know, City of New Buffalo, St. Joe, Buffalo Township, Lake Township, et cetera, have been approving and either doing their own revetment on government property or allowing and helping the homeowners protect their property. So I feel that this is a good thing to do, not a bad thing, if it's done properly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comment. Next person is Thomas Stillman. Thomas Stillman, I'm finding your name here. Okay, Thomas Stillman, you should be able to unmute and go ahead and talk.
Well, I have good news. I think I'll make my comments and writing rather than take up more of our time here. So we can move on, and I'll just send them to Mr. Simone.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, comments and writing are acceptable as well, definitely. All right, next person, Rich Hamm. Rich Hamm, I'm finding your name here, and I see you there. I just unmuted your line, so you can go ahead.
Thank you, Jim. I'm Rich Hamm, and my wife, Ally, and I own a home on Sun's End, immediately adjacent to Cherry Beach. I wanted to ask everyone to take a moment to consider what is being asked of a homeowner in our situation by those who would oppose the granting of our permits. If, if you're of the mind that we should not be allowed to protect our home in the way the state has recommended, you, you are simply asking us to allow that very property, and ultimately the home itself, to become the beach without consideration and without concern for the sort of equal protection under the law granted to hundreds and hundreds of other lakefront owners like us prior to this day. This strikes us as an unreasonable request, and frankly, one which the vast majority of us would not abide, and one which we frankly cannot afford. Chickaming Township faces the very real prospect of losing Cherry Beach, regardless of any protective measures taken by neighbors in the coming years. The majority of the twenty twenty season was lost due to the lake's incursion and resulting damage to dune and stairs. How many more times will it make sense to reinstall stairs? How many years will pass before the parking lot is compromised due to continued, excuse me, continued landward incursion of the lake? The only strategy for dealing with these impending losses cannot be attempting to prevent neighbors from protecting their homes. This would be nothing but a recipe for continuous fighting and litigation between lakefront owners and local and state government. And when today's lakefront homes fail, the fighting will continue with the new lakefront owners across the street. Stopping us from protecting our home solves nothing. We have pursued this means of protection reluctantly and have carefully and thoroughly vetted our options. We cannot move our home back from the lake in any meaningful way. We are trapped between the lake and the road. The Eagle website told us in a posting regarding sandbags posted in November of twenty nineteen, quote, "That sandbags are not a permanent solution to erosion problems," and that, quote, "Property owners should work with a contractor to design a more permanent solution, such as boulders, riprap, et cetera." "We are seeking only to protect our home utilizing a method which was recommended to us by Eagle and implemented by countless other owners before us. We know that emotions have run high in this process, and we hope to get to know many of you who have attended tonight, and you us in the years ahead, when we will surely all see that there is much more to all of us than a proposal to install or a statement of opposition to a single boulder revetment." Thank you, everybody, and thanks for everybody at Eagle for hosting tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comment. Okay, next person, my list is Stefan Leonard. Stefan Leonard, I am looking for your name. There you are, and I've unmuted you, so you can unmute yourself and go ahead and make your comment, sir.
Sure. My name's Steve Leonard, and my wife and I own one of the, the properties on Sun's End, just north of Mr. Hamm. And we purchased our property about two weeks before the great storm that took all of our bluffs occurred. So as you can imagine, our dismay when we, we went from, from an acquisition of a wonderful vacation home to a, an ongoing challenge and battle and casualty that we, that this has all become. Our homes, especially my, my direct neighbors' homes and, and our home are all in great peril right now. We've been told that if we didn't install the temporary sandbags at the base, we probably would have lost those homes this winter, and from what I've been seeing lately, I'm not surprised to hear that because it's, it's just been a very aggressive storm season so far. So we are, we are seeking to protect our new family home, and obviously, we want to do this in the most permanent fashion we possibly can. And hence, the extensive work that we've done and monies that have been spent to devise the, the rock revetment in the fashion that we have to be as as sympathetic to and aware of our neighbors as we possibly could be. The, the revised drawings show that, that we will, in, in all circumstances, allow for the passage of, of walkers along the beach and the peaceful coexistence of our bluff protection and the people's ability to, to walk, and that was very, very important to us, and, and that's why we revised the drawings the way that we did. So we appreciate your consideration, appreciate your sympathies to the circumstances we find ourselves in, and look forward to hopefully getting some resolution to this very, very challenging issue as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next person up to comment is Jill Underhill. Jill Underhill, I am going to unmute your line, so you should be able to go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Jill Underhill, and I live in Harbor, Chickaming Township, Michigan. If the Sun's End homeowners' applications are granted, the construction of permanent boulder revetments will have a significant impact on the landscape and on the natural interchange of sand between the beach and the dunes. Public access will be disrupted and may be hazardous. Hard armor revetments will destroy the already fragile dune to the south of the subject properties on Sun's End and will surely cause great damage to Cherry Beach, which everybody that comes out here considers to be the crown jewel of Chickaming Township. I think that the four applicants should use the sand Geo Tubes. They're more appropriate. They're not permanent. They're not hazardous to people walking. The ordinary high watermark changes, and you're going to have many times when you're not going to be able to walk the beach, and you'll have dangerous boulders and the accompanying metal materials that go along with the installation. So I, I strongly oppose the applicant's proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All right, got a couple more names here to go through, and then we'll open it up to anyone else that wants to make a comment. All right, next person up is Peggy McTeague. Looking at my list here. Okay, Peggy McTeague, I have unmuted your line, so you should be able to comment now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for holding this hearing for all of us to listen and to comment on. I am a member of the Cherry Beach Committee. And three years ago, and we started gathering information to try to preserve this property and figure out how we would raise the money. I did research into Chickaming Township's master plans, which it revises every five years. So I'm going to really cite what Chickaming Township has been about historically in terms of our beauty and public beachfront. Our master plan ensures the irreplaceable value of our shoreline for use in perpetuity. This is why people come to this area. We may be able to walk between the high watermark and boulder revetments, and as Ben said, there's a couple of feet available right now at the Cracker Jack revetment, which is a god-awful monstrosity. But the beauty of that shoreline is marred forever. But on page nine of the master plan, it says that "The natural features of Chickaming Township are the stimulus for our primary economic activity, which are recreation and tourism. If the natural beauty and recreational value are diminished, so too will the attractiveness of the area for visitors and for second homeowners." Chickaming Township plans to work in close cooperation with land trusts, other nonprofit organizations, and governmental agencies like Eagle to preserve the natural assets of the township. And I would say that the public trust and protecting the public trust is critical in this stage. There are seven miles of lakefront in Chickaming Township. Ninety-eight percent of it is owned privately. We only have two percent that is public. We've just raised four million dollars to try to make it three percent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next person is Rob Guilfoyle. Rob Guilfoyle. See you there. Oh, must have raised your hand. Hold on. Okay, there you are. All right, so you're unmuted now. You can go ahead.
Yeah, Jim, thank you.
Yeah, Jim, thank you. I'm a member of the Lakeshore Preservation Group. Um, I'm up in the Lake Township area. My family's owned lakefront property for sixty years up here. Uh, I truly feel for the homes slash septic systems that are in jeopardy. Um, I don't have the answer, and I've heard a lot of good input on both sides of this this evening. Um, to kind of mirror what's been stated, uh, primarily from the opposers, which I am one of. Uh, the hard shore armoring of our beautiful lakefront. Uh, is a permanent, permanent thing. The geo tubes which my neighbors to the south. Have installed are indeed a little bit more eye appealing. And was mentioned earlier, if they get covered up with sand, even better. Uh, or if they're no longer necessary, you just cut them open and let the sand migrate back to the beach. Uh. I understand property restrictions for homeowners. Uh. Again, it, it's a very volatile subject and uh. I'm just hoping that Eagle and Chickaming will uh, will make the right determination. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comment. All right, folks, that takes us to the end of my list of people who had ahead of time requested to speak. So. At this point, um, if you have not commented and you want to make a comment, um, you can click.
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to go back and see if Julie Glavine was back with us or not?
Yeah, I've actually been checking. And she's not um, on my, on the list of attendees right now. Um, if for some reason, uh, Ms. Glavine, if you're signed in under somebody else's name, just go ahead and raise your hand and we'll call on you. So you can do that, too. Um, yeah, so what's the point? If you haven't made a comment and you'd like to comment, you can click the raise hand icon and I will call your. Your, your name and unmute you just like we've been doing everyone else. Um, oops, I want to share my screen one more time. So. And again, if you don't want to make a comment, you'd like to do it another way on my screen, you can see other ways to submit an official comment. So you can do it that way as well. All right, so looking at my list, we've got a few more people who have raised their hand, looks like. So. I'll call on the first person that raised their hand. And again, you have three minutes. Uh, to make your comment. I'll let you know when you have about a minute left. So our first person up is Peter Steele. So uh, Peter Steele, I've unmuted your line. You can go ahead.
Um, I'm actually Mary Kay Steele.
Okay.
Um, I'm pseudo my husband. Um, I am up in uh, Lake Charter Township as well, and we had a um. A fellow who thought he would like to do a, a hard revetment, and he is, he's trying out the geo tubes. Um, it's working very well for him. It is a temporary solution. I think um, Rich Harm. Was saying he was concerned because it's not permanent. I think those opposed are thinking that's the problem with revetments is that they are permanent. I have been on this lakeshore since birth nineteen sixty-three. I've been through a couple of these high water incidents and um. The, back in the eighties, we put sandbags and snow fences. And they worked very well. So if you are concerned. And if you want to see what other solutions. How effective they are, I would say come on down. Uh, you know, park at Weko, walk the beach. There was a time when we could not traverse our beach this summer. Because of stone revetments put in in the eighties. Um. And they've really cut into neighbors' properties. So that is a valid concern. Um, but I would say come down, look and see. What are these softer alternatives? What can they do? And then someone mentioned that um, you know, Saint Joe is letting revetments. Well, go down there, see if you can walk the beach. I guarantee you, you cannot with those revetments down there. There's, there's no walk in the beach down there and go farther up in Michigan. I also um, have the privilege of having some property up. Toward Manistee, Luddington. Um, the people there who have put in revetments, they are scrambling to fix what they have done. Uh, by reinforcing their revetments. Fortunately, my father had the foresight to not. Participate in that activity and we do have a beach to traverse up there. So I would say take some walks, take some drives. And see what's working because the revetments do not work. And it's documented. Um, and I would just encourage you to not just do your Google searching, but actually do some walking and see. What's going on. Um, I love the beach. I love that um. The sand dunes and how the sandbar is marching down and repairing itself down by um. Down by the power plant. So come down by the power plant, see how that. See how that, that very shallow sandbar is coming in, it's repairing. If you look into dune grass, it takes a long, long time for dune grass to take hold. So. Just do some more, more in-depth research about more natural repair. Because it will do it itself if it's allowed to do it. And that's spoken from a native. Beachwalker. So um, I feel for you. And I just don't want you to do something that you will regret. That's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, next person, uh, Robert Hartman. Robert Hartman, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and uh. Make your comment. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Yes, my name is Robert Hartman. I'm a resident of Elegan County, Michigan. I ask that you consider my comments as a case study, really, that I feel directly relates to the proposed revetment project. I've seen firsthand the construction of five different armor stone revetments. In Elegan County and also Van Buren County. They're located over a five or six mile stretch of beachfront. Starting from Highfield Beach subdivision in the north end in Elegan County. Through Sleepy Hollow on the south end. In each of the five revetment construction cases, the sand beaches immediately disappeared. And was lost for the long term. In fact, for a revetment that was constructed three years ago. Uh, the sand beach has been missing, if you will, for three years. Um. I'm aware of no examples over that stretch of beach, five or six mile stretch of beach. Where a armor stone revetment was constructed and there's actually sand in front. No such examples exist. Not even a ribbon of sand, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting. In front of these revetments, beachwalkers are not able to wade into the lake by walking in from a natural sand beach. Into, you know, zero depth water and then deeper. In my opinion, it's very likely that the sand beach will be lost for the long term. If these revetment construction projects are permitted. I oppose the proposed revetment construction. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. Uh, next person with their hand raised is Don Bridgeman. Don Bridgeman, go ahead. You can uh, make a comment.
Okay. Okay, hi, my name is Don Bridgeman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, I don't want to date myself, but uh, I've been using the beaches between Harbor Beach and Cherry Beach for probably for, since the early fifties. And um, you know, I, I got a saying, the, the lake giveth and the lake taketh. And I remember nineteen ninety-eight, we couldn't walk the beach. I mean, we couldn't walk it at all. And then a few years later, we had, we had a, you know, fifty yards of sand. And it, the lake does erode. And it erodes an area where you got, where you got real soft sand. Some areas that have uh. They have clay. Like right by Harbor Beach, it's eroded a lot of sand, but the clay has held it back a little bit. And I, I feel for those homeowners, four or five homeowners between Harbor Beach and Cherry Beach. But you know, there's a term called buyer beware. I mean, I looked at some property in Coloma about twenty-five years ago. And I was gonna buy it, right, right off the, right off the lake. Until I went outside, I was walking in the backyard overlooking the dunes and there was a big fault line there. The fault line was about six inches wide. And I just got to thinking, yeah, that, that house isn't going to be here too long. I didn't buy. And it was on the lake. It was a nice piece of property and a great price and great price because it was, you know, the area was eroding pretty bad then. That was twenty-two years ago. The property's still there. It built up. You know, the lake does go back. Right now, we had a high watermark where we had rain and snow and whatever. And in a few years, we may not have that. We may, you know, we. Those four or five people may spend fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars and it could be a waste of money. And I agree with the geo, the geo sandbags would be an easy way to go, a more aesthetic way to go. And it will be probably a compromise for everybody. And, you know, some people say it'll work, it won't work, but it'll work in the short term. You know, but the lake wasn't made to be held back. If you look at the dunes over the years and you actually go to Stevensville, look out by Grand Mir. That lake was probably all the way to up to Red Arrow that, you know, a million years ago or a hundred thousand years ago. The lake's been evolving. That's changed. I don't think nature planned on people building houses that close to the lake. And I think that's the reason. Think probably people with some very good foresight seventy-five years ago or a hundred years ago should have said. You know, the setback's going to be. Oh. Three hundred yards from the lake, the high watermark, three hundred yards. We wouldn't be talking. There wouldn't be no homes. It'd be all.
One minute.
It'd be more beautiful. So I think we got ourselves to blame for this because we build homes that close to the lake. Ah, you know, we can tax people. And it could be, and it could be good for, for everybody. The long and the short of it is that. That we don't want to see them lose their homes. We don't want a war. We've got to compromise. But uh, I just wish those homeowners would look at the geo, the geo sandbags. They'd be more, they'd be more uh. Aesthetic, and I think they're more safe. I think someone's going to get hurt trying to cross rocks and slip and fall. I think that, that's going to be a problem somewhere down the line. All right, thank you for your time and uh. Let's, let's, let's do the right thing. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next person up, Daniel Glavine. Daniel Glavine. I muted your line.
Yes, hi, Jim. Uh, I actually had comments to make on the merits of the, of the subject of the meeting, but. Now I'm worried that everyone's concerned about the whereabouts of Julie Glavine. Who you called a couple of times. I can tell you she's safe in our kitchen. Conducting a, a remote tutoring session which was scheduled for the top of the hour, which was.
Must explain.
Seconds before you called her. Everybody rest assured, she's fine.
Thank you.
Um. I, I live at, I have a place at one, three, seven, four, one, Sun's End. And my family has owned uh, this property uh, for more than a century. Um, so I have seen, as Mr. Bridgeman mentioned, the lake come and go. Um. I think it's important that people not panic. Uh. I also think. That a couple of comments Mr. Nelson made at the outset. Uh, are classic straw man arguments. He said, people are confusing revetments and groynes. No, they're not. A revetment armors the dune, a groin extends out into the lake. No one's confusing those. Uh, he also said. These, these proposed revetments will not encroach on other persons' property. Well, no one's arguing that either. But I have taken part in. At least eight or ten Zoom meetings on these issues. And I heard. Statements from two eminent professors from University of Michigan and Michigan Tech. I think Norton and Meadows were their names. And they said. If you armor the dune, it is inevitable. That downstream properties will be damaged. And the township engineer in one of the meetings agreed. So what we have here is proposed revetments. And downstream from those revetments are an association beach, which I have an interest in. And Cherry Beach, which one of the earlier speakers described as the jewel of Chickaming Township. Which is in the process of being expanded because of donations of more than a million dollars.
If woman.
I, I thought it was interesting that when. Mr. Zemont was asked the question, what if Cherry Beach is destroyed? And he really couldn't answer that. Especially in light of the testimony from the experts from Michigan and Michigan Tech. That damage to the downstream property. Is inevitable. Well, the answer to the question, what if Cherry Beach is destroyed? Is that Eagle will have let down. The citizens of Chickaming Township, the donors who pledged their hard earned money to expand it. As well as everybody who walks the beach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, next up is John Trenta. John Trenta, unmuted your line. You can go ahead and unmute. John Trenta, you there? You can. Should be able to unmute your line.
Got it. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jim. So John Trenta, I have a home on thirteen, seven, sixty, Sun's End, which is lakefront property and it's adjacent to the four properties we're discussing. Not only are we adjacent to them, we are actually in the middle of those four properties. And over the past ten months, we've sought professional counsel ourself on the rising water impacts. And are aware of the issues of uh. Revetments to adjacent properties. The bottom line is. We are supportive of these property owners being granted permits. Now maybe a little bit more background. Before buying our property eleven years ago, we did some research on lakefront homeownership. And you can get a lot of information on a hundred and fifty plus years of water levels. The average erosion per year, and we spoke to Acelcos and others that do dune protection, including revetments. I also spoke to the predecessor of Eagle, the MDEQ, and in particular, Michelle DeLong. And she was involved with not only these type of permits, but permits for home construction. Michelle informed me then, when lake levels are high, that revetment permits were available to homeowners to protect their property. Based on that, I proceeded to buy the property, not unlike the four property owners in question. Currently Eagle is permitting revetments on Lake Michigan. These four property owners sought professional counsel on their erosion issues. Those professional counsel came up with the best solution. I know there's other solutions, but. The revetment was the best solution for them and it appears to meet the permitting requirements. Landowners have a right to protect their property and their homes. So we're supportive of the property owners being granted a permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, it looks, at this time, I don't have any other hands raised, so I'm gonna give it another. Second here to see if there's any last minute people that would like to make a comment that haven't done so already. I want to remind you that if you want to make a comment, it's open until January fifteenth, the comment period. Looks like there on my screen and there's a couple other ways to make a comment. Uh, and it looks like we do have one other person that's raised their hand, Sherry Curry. Sherry Curry, I just unmuted your line. You can go ahead.
Good evening, Jim and everybody else listening, and thank you for everybody putting this together. And I've just a quick comment. Um, I am on the Chickaming Township park board, but this comment is as a. Individual citizen. Uh, I will address with the park board in writing um, soon in this time period. But it's, it's hard to just explain that. I've been walking between Harbor Beach and Cherry Beach before Neil Armstrong really walked on the moon. I mean, I've been here a while. And uh, things you see. And uh, things you see, you know, neat things like Walter Jacobson from Channel Two in Chicago had to be picked up by a helicopter because he got snowed in on this side of the lake, but also, you know, a couple homes down from him in between Harbor and Cherry Beach had a friend named Stackbeck. And his family owned a home there on Sun's End. And uh, neat thing, um, the family came from Fort Wayne, which I thought was real far at the time. You know, heck, I'm high school, early college, whatever. And uh, it just, long and short of what I wanted to close with tonight. Shortly after that family built the home, Lake Michigan swallowed it. And witnessing this, you know, um, it just made me for years respect the lake. And now there's a home sitting on the same, what's left of property from where there used to be a home. Now the Stackbacks didn't rebuild. They, they knew that there may be trouble coming. And there's reasons why you can't get property insurance companies to insure your home on the lake like that. You know, it's not a tornado, a hurricane, a sudden thing. It's erosion. And uh, I know Eagle is having this to um, put their laws to where they, you know, it's not on sentiment, it's not from the heart, it, it's what, what can be said. And to that, I would just really ask you to defer to everything that Ian Ram said earlier. Because he, he nailed it. He, he laid it out specifically why you guys should follow the law and not allow these resentment, revetments. I'm sorry. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, thank you, man, for your comment. Okay, with that, looks like um, all commoners have uh, been called upon. So um, with that, I want to thank you all for your comments, and I am going to turn it back over to Ben. And Ben, you can uh, I guess, read off your closing statement.
Okay, and so I am gonna read the closing statement, and when that, when I'm done with that, the official hearing will be done. And then I've been taking notes. I do wanna try to respond to a handful of things, partly for clarification, partly for the educational moment we've got here. And again, clarification, maybe, I think some people misunderstood either what I said or, or some of the plans. So this is my, the, the official public hearings uh, closing statement, but then don't log off, okay? So thank you for your comments and your cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you can submit additional written comments uh, through January fifteenth. Following the close of the public comment period, we'll, we will consider those comments that have been received and will make on the proposed project. Just to remind you, you can submit those. You see the, what's on the screen. And sorry for those of you who are only here uh, via phone. You can't see the screen, but those, you've got three different options there for submitting comments. So the hearing is now closed. Thank you again, and don't log off yet unless you've got tutoring to do. I'm gonna start with probably one of the more complex or confusing things about this, this ordinary high watermark issue under part three twenty-five. And then also the two different statutes, part three fifty-three, the sand dunes law. And there was questions I could see on the uh, on the printed questions about the ordinary high watermark moving. I'm not gonna get into the ordinary high watermark as defined under, by the courts under Glasskeckle, but this application is unique in this way. I, I shouldn't say it's unique, but I want to just make sure people understand. The two different statutes, part three fifty-three, the sand dunes law, that statute has authority from where the critical dune atlas shows from nineteen eighty-nine, what they identify as critical dunes, all the way to the water's edge. So any sort of structure or contour change um, in that area to the water's edge, not the ordinary high watermark, but the water's edge. That's where the critical dunes statute has authority. The ordinary high watermark under the other statute, part three twenty-five stops our, our direct authority, the state of Michigan's direct authority of as being out in the lake and your waist deep, and you're walking towards the shoreline when your feet are at the elevation of five eight zero point five, you take another step. State of Michigan's state law twenty-five Great Lakes Submerged Lands Act. Once you've walked um, landward of that elevation, that statute no longer has authority. Somebody asked, and I, hopefully I'm gonna wrap this up so, so it makes sense to people. Somebody asked, so does, if the beach erodes, does the ordinary art move? And the answer is yes, it does. I mean, the I'm seeing something coming up saying my internet connection is unstable. It looks like, are you still with me, Jim? And everybody else?
Yeah, we can still hear you, Ben.
Something popped up to say it was unstable. So so the ordinary high watermark does move. It's all about what the elevation of the ground is. And so how does that relate to this application? Based on the plans that they submitted. And last time I was out there, maybe three weeks ago, this is what really gets kind of uh, whatever, I don't, confusing, but bear with me. They applied for, they have applied for permits under both statutes, the sand dunes law and the Great Lakes law, under the existing conditions and even what their plans show. They don't actually need a permit under part three twenty-five. And so you ask, why would somebody ask for a permit under part three twenty-five if they don't need it? And, and remember, the reason why is everything that they're proposing under current conditions is landward and above that elevation of five eighty point five. And there's at least two reasons why, and, and people probably have other reasons why they still are seeking a part three twenty-five permit, even though technically right down to the, that tenth of a foot, they don't need one. And it's because what if those conditions change so drastically between the time that they've applied for a permit or, or even possibly get the permit and construction? And the scenario I'm speaking of is that that they might, under today's conditions, might not need a permit under part three twenty-five. But if there's a big storm and the ground elevation change, the beach erodes, deflates, whatever you want to call it, and, and if they had a permit that wasn't authorized under part three twenty-five, the Great Lakes submerged land statute, and they needed to install, you know, here's this permit, but, but they don't have authority to do work Lakewood at that five eighty point five, then they're caught in between. So again, I hope I haven't lost people, but that's one of the reasons why. The other is that there's provisions under the part three twenty-five Great Lakes submerged lands to do maintenance in kind and in place. Once that permit issued for that portion of the project of the, of the, uh, in this case, revetment that would be Lakewood or the ordinary high watermark. So I'm more than willing to help try to explain that to people in, in a dialogue, but I, I, I'm gonna keep this as a one-way conversation now. What kind, one-way conversation, one-way monologue, I guess. Uh, I hope that, I hope that explains to some degree. If you do email me or, or phone me, I will do my best to, to get back to you, and we can have more of a one-on-one discussion about that. A couple other quick clarifications. I, one person said that, that Eagle recommended a revetment. I'm not sure, I'm positive that the, that the state did not recommend. You know, if maybe they read our website and took those as recommendations, but I just want to make it clear that, that no Eagle staff has recommended revetments. We, we accept applications, but we don't tell people that they should apply. There was a couple of comments about rebar and metal and things like that. I think there may be some confusion. I do know that the, the crackerjack permits that were issued in that situation, they were allowed to use as what's often called the mattress material, the smaller material that the large boulders nest into. They were allowed to use uh, concrete, some of it having rebar. That permit was issued such that no exposed concrete will be allowed to remain. All of the large armored boulders has to cover all of the concrete. So, and that's an issue that uh, we haven't done a final compliance check with that app, with that, with those permits yet. I don't believe that, and I mean, I know that under these applications, I'm pointing to the paper versions of them that I've got here. The Sun's End applications, they are not proposing use of concrete rubble. They're proposing natural material that of course then would not have rebar in it. And uh, the last thing to say is somebody mentioned that uh, and Mr., maybe it was Mr. Ram, that the adjacent property owners on the, on the landward side of these were not properly notified. You know, that's a thing where uh, in these applications where our authority is along the lake shore, it's, it's the adjoining property owners who are, if you call them riparians, or along adjoining where that impact is gonna happen. So uh, I don't really have the, the ideal answer to that, you know, why weren't um, adjoining property owners on the landward side, say on the other side of Sun's End uh, notified, but it's just been the convention for as long as I've been in the department that it's those that are along the lake shore are considered to be the adjoining property owners. So again, if you're not satisfied with how I explained something, please email me and say, let's set up a phone conversation. I know I'm very difficult to get ahold of on the phone. But if you email me, we can have a dialogue and um, thank you for allowing me to, to ramble here, but I do think it's a good chance to, to um, help people at least get a feel for what I, that first part I was talking about, that how the ordinary high watermark actually is mobile because it's all set on an elevation, and I'm speaking of part three twenty-five there. So, there you go, Jim.
All right, Ben, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. We did have several other questions that did come in earlier about the order high watermark. So I'm glad you were able to take some time to address, address those, and I appreciate everyone who's stuck around uh, to the end here. Um, I'm just gonna open it up to Kyle really quick. Kyle, do you have any comments that you wanted to make before we uh, end this?
You know, I think Ben hit on most of them. Uh, something I was thinking about, wanted to express, it's just that it's, it's clear on these calls and, and Ben and I have been involved in a few of these public hearings. Um, that, you know, these issues, these lakeshore issues are important and they're personal to everyone on, on all sides of the issue. And I just want to assure everybody that that's not lost on the department. It's not lost on, on Ben or myself, and, and just that we greatly appreciate the, the public participation uh, in these meetings. So thank you to everybody.
Okay, thanks, Kyle. So thanks to Kyle and Ben for being here tonight. He is, as you can see on the screen, there's Ben's scattered information. If you do want to chat with him a little bit more after this, you can do that. Um, want to remind everybody that we did record tonight's hearing, so if you missed part of it, or um, maybe you have somebody that's, that wanted to participate that couldn't, um, you can forward it on to them, and I'll provide the link to uh, Ben and Kyle, and you guys can forward it on to the attendees today uh, when you want. And I think you'll probably be able to also find a link in my waters when it's available. It's usually posted. So uh, thank you all for sticking around and uh, for all your thoughtful comments. We really do appreciate that. Uh, hopefully you all have a, a great rest your evening. Uh, thank you.